Good evening and welcome to Lowell Zoning Board, zoning board of appeals, public hearing for December 9th. Public interest, if you have a phone, please place it on vibrate or turn it off. If you wish to take calls or speak amongst yourselves, please do in the hallway for courtesy of the petitioner. Tonight's voting member is Mr. Marc Briere. For public record, we only have, we have available tonight four members, so all votes for approval must be 4-0 or they will remain fatal moving forward. We have no continued business. We're gonna move the agenda out of order for other business, for minor modification to 900 Chempstead Street, ZB 2019-4, for variance of Cronos Inc., 900 Chempstead Street, section 6.3, the applicant seeking a minor modification to a previous variance approval granted February 11, 2019, for a temporary wall sign that exceeds the maximum permitted size and was not parallel to or within 45-degree parallel to the street in the high-rise commercial HRC zoning district. Good evening, sir.
I work at Cronos Incorporated. And as State Chairman, I came before this board on February 11th to seek permission to put a sign on the building, which we were granted, thank you for that. Since that time, we've been fortunate enough to receive some additional awards, namely the Fortune 100 Best Companies for 2019, Glass Doors Best Places to Work, Computer World Top 100 Places to Work, Boston Business Journal Best Places to Work in Massachusetts, and of course, we remain on the Globe list. As a result of that, we'd like to modify the sign. Now, there's another reason as well. We continue to grow at our location in Lowell, and the sign that we were fortunate enough to erect last year has, as you may recall, covered some of the windows on the top floor. Now, at that time, although we controlled that floor, we were not occupying it with any folks, it was just used for storage. But again, we have continued to grow, and we are now gonna build that floor out and put people on that, in that area where the sign partially obscures the windows. So for the reason of these additional awards, as well as the continued growth in the future occupancy of that floor, we're seeking some permissions to produce a smaller sign on the, on the building. So the current sign is about 21 feet tall, if you will. The new sign would be approximately seven and a half feet tall, be the same length. And I've indicated what the, the language on the sign would be modified slightly to reflect the, the multiple awards that we've received, so.
Great, thank you. And congratulations on your, your many awards and your continued growth and success over at Crosspoint within the city. It's wonderful here as always. At this time, I'd like to open up to the public, anyone wishing to speak in favor? In favor? In favor? That portion of public hearing is now closed. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? In opposition? In opposition? That portion of public hearing is now closed.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have no issues with this modification, it's actually small in scale, so it makes sense, and you're getting more, kinda more bang for your buck. And congratulations to you, Mr. Profit and Cronos, for all your awards.
Thank you.
Wish you the best of luck.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ben. Marc?
As I said during your last visit in February, your corporate and workplace achievements are deserving of a movie screen up there. So whatever we can do to commend your, your corporation and special thanks for locating here in Lowell, come in.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Marc, Sean.
Three, Mr. Chairman, I agree with the same sentiments of my fellow board members, and that's fantastic work that Cronos is doing over there, congratulations on your awards. Too bad, it's too bad that now you gotta, you know, lower the sign a little bit because you got, you guys are expanding so quickly. I mean, I say that tongue-in-cheek, obviously, but I mean, it's just fantastic what you guys are doing over there, and I wish you the absolute best of luck.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sean. Yes, Mr. Profit, you know, when you were here last time, there was, there was talks of possible additional signage. The reduction of sign does bode well for, for your expansion over there. Your success is our success, and we appreciate everything that's going on over in that, in the building, and being part of your growth and your corporation, and we, we thank you for that. I think these two additional signs will get you where you need to do, where you need to be. I just wanna hold for any future signs, 'cause this, we may need to revisit this, and if we, we do in the future, we can look at doing another addendum for you to this if...
Certainly. And we may, to the board...
Next year, yep.
Come in front of you again and maybe look at something on Tower 3, we're evaluating that right now, but of course, we recognize that that would come in front of the, the board for your, for your consideration, so.
Yeah, I just wanna maintain that, that this will be a continued minor modification, an addendum to the existing...
Absolutely.
...variance that you came in for at the beginning.
Yes, sir, thank you.
That being said, any other comments? May I have a motion?
Three, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion on ZB 2019-04 to accept a minor modification for a sign located at 900 Chempstead Street and agree to the modification.
You have a second?
Second.
You have a roll call?
Chairman Perrin?
Approve.
Member Peck?
Approve.
Member Callahan?
Approve.
Member Briere?
Approval.
Very good, unanimously approved. Best of luck with the new signs and your continued growth, and may you have a happy holiday season.
Yeah, same to the board, thank you everyone, appreciate it, thank you.
Moving forward on the new business, we have ZB 2019-52 for variances, Kenneth M. Lenea at care of JAF 27 LLC, 66 Manchester Street, section 5.1 and 6.1.10. The applicant is seeking variance approval to convert an existing single-family home on 66 Manchester Street into a two-family home and build a two-family home on a vacant lot at 72 Manchester Street. Both properties located in the traditional neighborhood two-family TTF zoning district. Both 66 and 72 Manchester Street require variance on approval under section 5.1 to encroach on the minimum frontage, minimum lot area dwelling unit, and for any other relief required on Lowell zoning ordinance, 72 Manchester Street will also require variance approval under section 6.1.10 to exceed the maximum curb cut. Good evening. How are you tonight, sir?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Kenneth Lenea, Cornerstone Land Consultants, representing JAF Inc. this evening. We're before you, as you stated, to request some zoning relief at both the existing dwelling at 66 Manchester Street and then the vacant parcel located just adjacent to it at 72 Manchester Street. As you had stated, we did require area variances as well as frontage variances for both lots. The zoning of the parcels is two-family zone to the TTF zoning district. I have a couple of neighborhood letters I'd like to bring up and also some revised plans before I go into my review of the project based on the city's departmental review, alright?
Thank you.
Alright, good evening, Mr. Chairman. So as, as we had stated, we'll start with 66 Manchester Street as it exists. The applicant is looking to add an additional unit to the existing single-family home that exists on 66 Manchester Street. As you can see, towards the rear of the parcel where the existing deck is, there's a bump-out area, and those hand-drawn plans would revise the interior of that unit to allow that second duplex-type unit to be added. If you look at the site plan itself, we've proposed a two-car driveway to be added to the eastern side of that parcel. The driveway would measure 12 feet in width and 40 feet in length, which would allow two vehicles to be tandem located in that space. In addition, the lot already has an existing 12-foot wide by 68-foot long driveway, which would also accommodate two vehicles stacked, so for a total of four parking spaces, which is meeting the requirement of four spaces, two per dwelling unit. The rear of the parcel shows the usable open space is well over the required 500 square feet per dwelling unit, and based off of a very thorough and exceptional review by Fran in the planning department, I've realized that I should be paying more attention to the landscape open space requirement. So as a result of that, I did the review on 66, and it turns out we have 60% of landscape open space in the front between the front line and the beginning of the structure on the parcel. So in this particular case, I believe on 66, we're only looking for the minimum lot area per dwelling unit, which comes up just about 92 square feet shy per dwelling unit, as well as frontage, which again comes up very minimally at about 1.8 feet. The goal here and the reason for the variances is the owner of the parcel had previously subdivided the lot to secure the two-family zoning and the ability to construct a two-family on the adjacent parcel. As a result, he was required to take some land from the rear of the existing parcel on 66 Manchester Street. I believe that was done sometime in the early 90s? Or was it late 90s?
No, that was only like six, seven years ago.
Oh, really? In the 2000s? Okay, so 2000s. And when I approached the planning division, met with Christine, she had suggested to eliminate that awkward shape that shot off in the back of parcel 66 and try to make these lots more conventional, and then that way we would adjust the variance requirement so that it would be the minimal amount of variance requirement on both lots. There's only so much land available there, I'm not sure if you're familiar, but that parcel had a significant number of duplexes constructed on the northern side of the roadway. With this potential project, we're trying to mimic that additional two-family that was constructed across the street. I'm not sure if you want me to go into 72 now, or if you wanna handle, 'cause I believe these are two separate applications, so...
Yeah, correct, we'll, we'll, we'll deal with them both separately.
Okay, perfect.
I know they, they blend, but...
Absolutely, yes, sir.
Two votes and two, two variances.
Alright, so, so as far as the particular existing house, just the frontage and the, and the area, I believe that the proposed project as depicted is in kind with the neighborhood, clearly a two-family zoned area, looking to establish a two-family zone structure on this house. It does have the available space to do so, there would be no additional construction required on the exterior of the dwelling, we would just be modifying the interior and adding the second driveway. I'd be glad to answer any questions at this time.
Thank you very much. And for the matter of public record, prior to opening up to the public, I wanna state on the record, we are in receipt of seven letters of support of this project, 54, 56, 60, 63B, 69A, 69B, and 75A, all of Manchester Street in support of this project. Matter of public record, we'll issue a updated site plan dated today, matter of the public record. And that being said, I'd like to open up to the public, anyone wishing to speak in opposition? In opposition? In opposition? That portion of the public hearing is now closed. Anyone wishing to speak in favor? In favor? In favor? That portion of the public hearing is now closed with submittal of the in-favor signed letters. That being said, I'd like to open up to the board, Sean.
Thank you, three, Mr. Chairman. Yep, so, Miss Lenea, I did have some questions on the initial site plan based on what was on the registry, because there was that portion you were mentioning in the backend...
That is correct.
...that is actually, so with that being said, I mean, understanding that they're gonna have to, if, if this is approval, they're gonna have to, you know, go back and make sure that that easement is cleared out...
That is correct.
Because it's in, it's, it says, based on the plan itself, it was in proposed easement for the benefit of 66.
Correct.
So when that's, when that's done, I'm sure that you'll have that all taken care of.
Yeah, so the plan would be to complete an A&R plan, bring it back in front of the planning division once we, we receive hopefully a favorable review from tonight, we'll eliminate the easement...
Yeah.
...modify the deeds to appropriately meet the new A&R plan.
Okay. I'm, I'm trying to follow the, and I appreciate you providing us the, the layout of what's being proposed, but I'm trying to follow how it's, how it's gonna go for a two-family, because I'm looking at the first floor and I see the...
So the, the good thing, before I let you get too far and...
Sure.
...your smoke starts coming out of your ears.
No, I'm sorry.
Yeah. That, that drawing I supplied you is actually only of the addition portion, so it doesn't show the overall existing single-family home.
Okay.
So if you're trying to see how that structure that I provided you would be a two-family, it is not. The existing single-family home is the main structure with the length from front to back. The addition is only that small square part with the deck on it on the site plan. So all that I gave you a plan for was just the addition portion to be turned into an additional unit.
Okay.
Alright.
So I'm, just, just so I'm, I wanted to make sure we're clear, and I appreciate that.
Yep.
So the front door leads to, leads straight into the sec...
The farmer's porch.
With the farmer's porch leads straight into the area, leads straight into stairways that are going up to the second floor for the second unit?
That is correct.
Okay. And then...
Well, that whole thing you have there is the second unit.
Okay.
That's what I'm trying to tell you. So, yeah, I'm gonna come...
Yeah, maybe, yeah, I appreciate it, I'm just trying to...
You know, I'm not the only one who complains.
Yep. Sorry. So here's the, this is the, heading up to the second unit.
That is correct. So if you look at this plan here...
Yep.
...all that structure is showing is this square.
Okay.
That's it. It doesn't show this main porch.
Oh, there's the farmer's porch right there.
Yep.
Okay.
Right here.
Alright.
And then this, if you were to draw a line straight across here, here's unit two, here's unit one.
Okay. Alright, thank you very much, I appreciate it. Now, it's made, it's made a little clearer for me now, alright, I'm just, I didn't see the farmer's, the farmer's porch on the, on the plan, so that's where I was, I think that's where I was getting confused, thinking it was the front...
Yes, sir.
...front of the house, so. Okay. So, I mean, I, I don't really see too many, too many other issues with the, as long as the easement is taken care of, it looks like this will, this should fit in with the two fam, the traditional two-family neighborhood. I, I, I think we probably should get more clearer plans on the...
Absolutely. And I can, I can provide those to you.
Yeah, and then, I mean, probably condition that as a, as a condition, but other than that, I don't see really any issues, and I wish you the best of luck.
Wonderful, thank you, Sean.
Thank you, Sean. Ben?
Three, Mr. Chairman, you know, I agree, my colleague, Miss Lenea, I think, I think this project makes sense, you know, fisting with the zoning district for that, for the neighborhood, and I think it's gonna add a lot of value to that neighborhood as well. So wish you the best of luck, sir.
Wonderful, thank you, sir.
Thank you, Sean. Marc?
I believe you've more than adequately addressed the comments and concerns of the Department of Planning and Development. I'm not surprised by the support of the neighbors. I think it's a very appropriate plan for the existing neighborhood character, best of luck.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Marc. So we have, we have in front of us new submitted, so as a matter of condition, we're just gonna give a, an updated formal plan, and we can, we can move forward. I'm always, I'm always attuned to projects that continually to work with the neighborhood groups, and you, and you've demonstrated that time and time again, and I wanna, I wanna thank you for that. That's, that's a key element in any zoning project that goes on in the city is how it is planned, how it is perceived, and how it's communicated. And by getting letters shows, shows me and part of the public record that you took that time to go on through the neighborhood and to speak to the community and speak to your neighbors, so that, that bodes well for, for how you, how you operate in the professional light, and I, I wanted to make that part of that, that, and there's no opposition here. Always, always a beneficial thing to see that open communication and positive planning, so I'm a big fan.
Thank you.
And I appreciate that, and I thank you for your time of doing that, I know it's very time-consuming. Any other comments by the board? That being said, may have a motion.
Three, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion on ZB 2019-52 for 66 Manchester Street for variance approval under section 5.1 for minimum frontage and minimum lot area per dwelling unit to convert an existent sing, existing single-family home to a fan, two-family residential home, with the condition that updated plans on the layout of the conversion of the single family to two-family be provided to DPW, uh, DPD, sorry, excuse me.
Thank you, may I have a second?
Second.
Roll call?
Chairman Perrin?
Approval condition.
Member Peck?
Approve the conditions.
Member Callahan?
Approve the conditions.
Member Briere?
Approve the conditions.
Thank you, that one would've been approved, we wish you the best of luck there.
Wonderful, thank you very much.
Let's move on to new business, we have ZB 2019-53 for variances, Kenneth M. Lenea at care of JAF 27 LLC at 72 Manchester Street, section 5.1 and 6.1.10. The applicant is seeking variance approval to convert an existing single-family home on 66 Manchester Street into a two-family home and build a two-family home on a vacant lot at 72 Manchester Street. Both properties are located in a traditional neighborhood two-family TTF zoning district. Both 66 and 72 Manchester Street require variances under approval, section 5.1 to encroach on the minimum frontage, minimum lot area per dwelling unit, and for any other relief required of Lowell zoning ordinance. 72 Manchester Street will also require variance approval under section 6.1.10 to exceed the mayor, maximum curb cut. Good evening.
Hi, good evening, Mr. Chairman.
House of Lords, 72.
Members of the board, Kenneth Lenea, Cornerstone Land Consultants, representing JAF 27 LLC this evening. We're before you tonight for 72 Manchester Street, which was a previously subdivided lot from 66 Manchester Street, but again, there was an awkward scenario with how that lot line was created with easements going back and forth, and through sitting down a couple of meetings with Christine and Fran, we, we had worked out that it thought would be in the best interest of everybody in the neighborhood to eliminate that small strip of 10-foot land in the back of 66, add it back to 70, add it back to 66, and then provide a lot area of 7,184 for 72 Manchester Street. As a result, we're short of area by approximately 826 square, 816 square feet. We also are gonna be requiring a frontage variance on this lot. By keeping the lot where, the lot line where it was, we're 71.84 feet for frontage, lacking about 8.16 feet of frontage. Again, fairly minimal for the lots in that area, but again, requiring a variance from this board. In addition, after the review by the DPD, we did come up with some additional variance requirements that I overlooked in the application. So again, Fran, nice job, thank you. And what I did on the revised plan with today's date on it that I provided to you folks is I added those variance requirements onto the plan so that it was clear. The first variance that would need an additional requirement for setback distance is the minimum front yard garage setback. As required by the Lowell zoning code in the TTF zone, a 24-foot requirement for a garage is required. In this particular case, the structure on the 72 Manchester Street, we're looking for 21 feet. The structure itself meets the front yard setback of somewhere between a minimum of 15 and a maximum of 20, but ultimately, we don't meet the setback for, you know what, I'm gonna take that back. I'm gonna take that back. There was a lot going on in this site plan that Fran pointed out, so as a result, I moved the building back one foot on the plan that's in front of you. So I just additionally realized that we're going to need a front yard increase on the maximum setback. So in order to provide the parking, which I thought was the most important part of this development, as was outlined by one of the neighbors, I believe at 69A Manchester Street, I moved the structure back one foot so that it's now 21 feet from the front yard setback. It will now require a maximum front yard increase setback of 21 from 20, and a garage minimum front yard setback from 24 to 21. The result of doing that allowed me to show that there would in fact be four legal parking spaces for unit one. There would be two spaces in the driveway and two spaces in the garage, and then there would be three legal parking spaces for unit two. Those would be one garage space and two ad-grade space in the driveway. In order to do that, I had to achieve three feet setback from the lot line and gain an 18-foot parking space in front of the structure. In those cases, I've done that, and that's the reason for the adjustment of the variances. But it was also important to keep the landscape in the rear so that we could achieve the usable open space requirement. There's a 500-square-foot usable open space per dwelling unit, and you can see even though we slid the structure back one foot, we were still able to achieve 590 square feet per dwelling unit, so no variance would be required there. As a result of trying to mimic the neighborhood with this installation of a new duplex and looking at the several, you know, I wanna say at least a dozen structures across the street...
How much is it? 14?
14. They all have driveways coming up to existing garage with a landscaped area between them. We wanted to mimic that with the new dwelling to fit in with the new dwellings in the neighborhood, so what we've provided is two parking areas on either side, and in order to be allowed to fit two cars in side by side, we made one 21 feet wide and one 22 feet wide, which does exceed the maximum curb cut allowance of 15 in the zoning district. In this particular case, in order to gain access to a two-car garage and provide that additional parking off-street that we believe is so important in that neighborhood, we believe that this would warrant the granting of a variance for that setback distance and width. The last space that we had to achieve a variance request based off of Fran's review was the landscape open space. So in this particular zone, TTF, you're required to have a 50% landscape open space between the front yard and the, at the proposed dwelling. On the unit, in this particular case, we only achieved 39% due to the width of those two driveways gaining access to the structure. We feel as though that the structure itself cited meets all the requirements for side-yard setbacks. It does allow us to meet the rear yard setback, and although we are asking for a variance for the front yard setback, I, I did bring just an aerial shot, if the board wishes to see it, of the significant number of homes that are along the road that are, you know, within eight feet of the front yard setback, as well as across the street. You can see the significant number of pavement by the drivers, if you'd like to...
Please, thank you.
So my hope is, is by providing the additional parking area, which I know is the number-one contention of all these neighborhoods around the city of Lowell, although we are asking for the variances for the expansion of that width of driveway, that the, this board will look favorably upon that so that we could achieve that additional parking for the neighborhood and not create any parking issues out there. I'd be glad to answer any questions at this time.
Thank you very much. I appreciate the thorough explanation and the clarification. Wasn't, it wasn't the, the notes from DPD as it relates to 72 Manchester Street for that landscape requirement under Section 5.3.1. So I, I would, I would like to see you, because you're, you're, we've kind of been tramped here, but regardless. So Fran, if you may speak to that, are we going to need to make that, Jared, we make that an addendum to this, or is it a condition, or is it a supplement to the application?
Since the legal ad always specifies that it's an all other relief required, you can grant variance for Section 5.3.1.
Okay.
As part of that all other relief required.
Perfect. I want a clarification. Thank you. That being said, anyone wishing to speak in, like to open up to the public, first of all, anyone wishing to speak in favor? In favor? In favor? That portion of public hearing is now closed. Any others wishing to speak in opposition? In opposition? In opposition? That portion of public hearing is now closed. Like to open up to the board. Sean?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yep, I, I don't really have any other real issues. I do, I do notice it's, Manchester Street's kind of in my old neighborhood, so I'm familiar. I remember the days when that whole area was being, the duplexes on the north side were being, were being built, and, you know, and I think this is something that would certainly fit into the, into the neighborhood with the, you know, I, the minimum, I don't see that, you're right, the relief that's being requested does not appear to be a minimum. It does appear to be minimum, so, and I don't think I have any other further questions or concerns. So I wish you the best of luck. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Sean. Ben?
Like I said, Mr. Chairman, I have no objections. I think this makes sense. So I support it. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Ben. Mark?
I have no questions, Mr. Chairman, just a comment in the form of a compliment. That is a most impressive design.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Appreciate it.
Really attractive-looking.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mark.
Making me look bad.
So that being said, again, we appreciate your thoroughness and the clarification. We will take that 5.3.1 and we'll make it inclusive as any other relief as required, and you just follow up that, once that has been completed, we'll be in good shape. Any other comments or concerns? May I have a roll, motion?
Three, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion on ZB 2019-53 for 72 Manchester Street for variance approval under Section 5.1 for minimum frontyard setback, minimum frontage, minimum lot area per dwelling unit, Section 5.3.1 for landscape open plan, and Section 6.1.10 for, to exceed maximum curb cut to build a two-family residential home on the existing lot.
May I have a second?
I'll second the motion, Mr. Chairman.
May I have a roll call?
Point of clarification, did you also would like to include the Section 5.1 maximum frontyard setback, which the applicant brought up a moment ago?
Correct.
Well, I said minimum frontyard setback. Is it maximum or minimum?
They're moving the house back from, to be, to be 21 feet from the curb, whereas the maximum is 20 feet in that district, I believe.
Right.
Okay. I said minimum frontyard setback. I probably meant maximum front, I meant, I guess I meant maximum frontyard setback. Sorry about that, Jared. Thank you for, thank you for clarifying.
Thank you for clarifying.
Thanks.
And, and inclusive of 6.1.10 for the curb cut.
Yes.
Maximum curb cut. Great. Motion?
I made the motion.
You didn't? May I have a second?
It's been second.
I have a roll call.
I'll second.
Chairman Perrin?
Approve.
Member Peck?
Approval conditions.
Member Callahan?
Approve.
Member Brier?
Approval.
Then you've been approved, 4-0.
Wonderful. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. We appreciate your time.
And Jared, just a point of clarification, if you could also have a separate vote for 5.3.1, just to ensure that that's kosher?
Okay, I added that in the thing, but we'll, we'll just throw that in there. So just for clarification, under sec, I'd like to make a motion on the ZB 2019-53 on the 72 Manchester Street for a variance under Section 5.3.1 for landscaped open plan to build a two-family residential home on existing lot.
May I have a second?
I'll second the motion, Mr. Chairman.
May I have a roll call?
Chairman Perrin?
Approve.
Member Peck?
Approve.
Member Callahan?
Approve.
Member Brier?
Approval.
Thank you. You've been approved for all three aspects of your variance. And once again, I'd like to thank DPD for their thoroughness and their clarification for both.
Absolutely.
Petitioners as well as the board. They're, they're a valuable member of our commission, so.
All right. You guys have a great holiday.
Thank you.
All right.
Wish you the same. Safe. Moving forward, under other business, we have minutes for approval for November 14, 2019. Anyone have any comments, reviews, or edits? None being said, may I have a motion to accept?
So moved.
Three, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to accept the minutes for November 14, 2019.
May I have a second?
I'll second the motion, Mr. Chairman.
Roll call.
Chairman Perrin?
Approve the minutes.
Member Peck?
Approve the minutes.
Member Callahan?
Approve minutes for November 14.
Member Brier?
Approval.
That being said, we have no other business at this time. A motion to adjourn. May I have a second?
Second.
Second.
Meeting is adjourned. Have a good evening.
I wish everybody a Merry Christmas, Happy Holidays, and we'll see you all next year.
Merry Christmas, Happy Holidays.